Good evening, everyone. It's 6:30 and the League prides itself on being prompt and getting our work done and getting you out of here at a time that we have committed to. Thank you all for coming and thanks to Clallum County for allowing us to use this space. My name is Vicki Rudin. I'm a member of the League and I'll be moderating this evening's forum featuring candidates for the Port Angeles City Council. Our timers are Helga and Tom Montgomery, right down in front. We want to be sure our candidates are aware of them and any of you who later will be asking questions. The timer's job is to make sure that we stay within our time limits that have been established for each segment of the forum. The League of Women Voters is a 97-year-old national nonpartisan organization whose purpose is to promote the informed and active participation of citizens in government. Our goal for tonight's forum is to provide local citizens with the information to help them be informed and knowledgeable voters. You can find more information about the League on the membership table near the door or by going to our website, which you can see on the banner in front of us. In addition to candidates, you will find there are local propositions appearing on your ballot. The League has printed the propositions appearing on this year's general election ballot along with information drawn from the online voter's guide on Clallum County website. Please help yourself to copies on our information table. The proposals are Clallum County Proposition 1, a tax for the juvenile detention facility; City of Port Angeles Proposition 1, a change in the city's form of government; City of Port Angeles Proposition 2, fluoridation of municipal water supply; and Metropolitan Park District 1 Proposition 1, debt to renovate and expand the community pool. We will be following the agenda you were given when you came in. If you don't have one, please raise your hand and a League member will bring you one. Before we begin, let's deal with a few important matters. Please note there are restrooms in the area immediately outside this room to your left. In case we need to evacuate the building, you should exit the way you came in. Also, please turn off all cell phones and devices that make noise. No photography, audio, or video recording devices of any kind are permitted during this forum unless you've already received permission from us. We're video recording this forum and with luck we'll have a link to it posted on the League's website within the next few days. To make the most of our time, I'll ask you to kindly refrain from applauding or making any other noises which in any way interrupt our speakers. I'll be sure to give you a chance at the end of our forum to give a round of applause to the candidates. League members wearing name tags are located around the room. Please signal to them if you need assistance. And now to the candidates. We're here to learn from and about the candidates for the two contested Port Angeles City Council races that will appear on the November 7th general election ballot, Positions 3 and 4. Positions 1 and 2 have unopposed candidates and will not be included in the forum. We've encouraged those two candidates to be in the audience this evening, they are, so that you will have an opportunity to talk with them later. There are seven members on the Port Angeles City Council and all positions are elected at large. The council serves as the city's legislative body. It sets policy, establishes the city's budget, and hires and fires the city manager. Council members serve four-year terms and the salary is $550 per month for council members. The mayor and deputy mayor are elected by the council from among its members and the mayor receives $650 a month and the deputy mayor's salary is $600 per month. There are four candidates before you this evening. Mr. Schromann Warren and Mr. Woschnowski are running for Position 3. Mr. Bergland and Ms. Dexter are running for Position 4. Because all four candidates are running for seats on the same council and council members will be facing the same issues and the same challenges, we're putting them all on the same panel together. In order by position number and then alphabetically, I'll ask each candidate to make an opening statement of no more than two minutes. Following the opening remarks, you, the audience, are invited to be part of this forum by asking your questions. You'll have 30 seconds to ask your question. The candidates will have one minute to answer each question, so please consider this time limit when crafting your question. League volunteers have index cards and pencils for you so that you can write down your questions in advance. You may address your question to a particular candidate or to all candidates. However, all candidates will be given the opportunity to answer all questions. We'll give everyone in the audience the chance to ask a question before taking follow-ups or multiple questions from the same person. We will close this forum by giving each candidate up to two minutes for closing statements and this will happen in the reverse order of the opening remarks. Now to the opening remarks. We've asked the candidates to introduce themselves by covering the following information: their qualifications for office, how do they intend to address the major challenges facing the City of Port Angeles, and what are their goals for their first year in office. Candidates, please keep your eye on the timers so you can gauge your time. By position and then in alphabetical order, we'll begin with Lindsay. And let me say at this point, because I have trouble with some of the last names of our candidates, they've all agreed that we'll be on a first-name basis. Lindsay, your opening statement.
Thank you so much and thanks for the League for hosting this forum. Thank you, everyone in the audience, for being here and taking time on this nice evening to come inside and talk about local politics. My name is Lindsay Schromann Warren. I'm running for Port Angeles, Position 3. I was born and raised in Port Angeles. I went to Hamilton Stevens and Port Angeles High School. My mother, Patricia Schromann, taught at Dryke Elementary and she's here in the audience tonight. Thanks for being here, Mom. And my dad, Ron Warren, is a painting contractor in town as well. I went to Oberlin College where I studied systems ecology, environmental studies, and chemistry. And I was influenced by the idea that if you want to make positive change in the world, go back to the place where you're from. So I came back to the Olympic Peninsula. I found field science education. I taught for about seven years, mostly out at Lake Crescent, at what was then Olympic Park Institute, now Nature Bridge. And during that time, I found I was more interested in public policy and kind of one of the structures that help us to be a productive community, what are good policies in terms of, you know, social, economic, and environmental policy. And so I went to law school. That's allowed me to now work in mostly constitutional law issues around what can government do, what can government do, and how does it stay accountable to the people? Feel like I can bring those skills to the city council, helping to work in the legislative policy arm of the city and helping to craft policies to address some of the major issues that we're facing as a community. One of the things I've been talking about extensively has been affordable housing and how the city can take more measures to help to ensure that we have affordable housing in the current crisis that we're dealing with. The city has a lot of potential that it could be doing. It already is taking some steps. I'd like to help to ensure that we do that more. And that also has trickle-down effects to other issues that people have been concerned about, substance abuse for one, which I think we'll get to in some of the questions. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, let's hear from Arthur.
Hello, I'm Arthur Woschnowski and I'm running for Position 3. I am the son of a Polish immigrant family. I was taught the meaning and value of hard work to which I abide by today. I graduated from high school and continued to study architecture at local community colleges. I'm currently employed as a full-time maintenance manager at a homeowners association where I work with a board of volunteers to maintain the community's infrastructure and amenities. I'm also a licensed general contractor and I provide many similar services to this community as well. With my hard work ethic, my employment and business experience, I believe this is a good transition to a city council member where I can give back to the people that have supported me. I'm running because I believe we need more diversity on the city council. I will provide new creative perspective in order to foster prosperity. I will provide oversight, creativity, and fair representation. My goal for this position is to work on current issues and make headway on creating resolutions so that we can focus on creating opportunities in the community. Just like many of you, I work hard to provide for my family and I will work hard to provide opportunities for all of you. So please vote for me so I can start working for everyone instead of just the ones who call me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Travis.
All right. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm excited to get out. It's been a very busy week with a lot of forums and enjoying engaging with the community and asking for your vote. A little bit about myself, I'm a third-generation native of Port Angeles. Like Lindsay, I went to school here growing up, went to Franklin and then Roosevelt and graduated Port Angeles High School in 2001. My motivation for running for city council is wanting to invest in this community. For the last 10 years plus, I have been involved in a lot of different avenues of community service, trying to make a difference in our town. And I've seen the power and the just amazing support of all the volunteers in this town and the potential that we have because of those. One of the questions that we were supposed to cover in the first two minutes, I want to touch on some of my first-year goals. I would like to see some resolution to the issue out at the Fairchild Airport. That is something that I think is vital to our community, whether or not we have commercial service coming into that airport. I think we need to have access to it and be thinking long-term about having some plan for keeping that open. The other things I'd like to address in my first year would be taking a very close look at the budget and the budget process and really diving into that. We have some short-term issues with the closing of the Nippon Mill. There have been a lot of cuts, actually in every department in the city, this year and into next, to address this shortfall. But it really, I think, drives home the point that we are too reliant on a few tax sources when one business in town shuts down and we have a budget crisis because of it. So look forward to answering more of your questions. Thank you.
And we'll conclude with Kate.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm running for city council because I want to be a part of making Port Angeles a vibrant and healthy community. I'm uniquely qualified for this position. I have a master's degree in public administration and my professional career was in rural health with a focus on community development. I spent the last few months attending city council meetings and meeting with city managers and local community leaders and I'm ready to hit the ground running. From these conversations, I've learned where we're ahead of the curve and already using collaborative efforts to solve community problems. That said, as a community, we have numerous concerns, including affordable housing, the opioid epidemic, and the need for smart growth that increases living wage jobs for current residents. There's a housing shortage for low-income renters and the inventory for people looking for purchase. City council must consider ways to address the lack of affordable housing, including zoning changes to allow accessory living units, inclusionary zoning, transit-oriented development, and ordinances to protect vulnerable renters. Secondly, Clallum County leads the state for opioid-related deaths. The city should continue working in partnership with the community to provide resources for those facing opioid use disorders. City government can help community providers leverage dollars to increase citizens' access to resource and comprehensive healthcare. Finally, a shortage of jobs that pay a living wage, combined with limited childcare options, are creating additional barriers for our citizens. As we consider growth and development, we must focus our energy on how to bolster from within. In the long term, these issues are complex but solvable with smart zoning, community collaborations, and open lines of communication. On the subject of communication, my goal for the first year is to significantly improve the communication between the council, city staff, and the community. I will push for policies to increase public engagement in the decision-making process. We need to increase transparency in the city government and give citizens a stronger voice.
Thank you, candidates. Next, we will take as many questions as possible from you, the audience. Once again, all candidates will have an opportunity to respond to all questions, even those directed to a specific candidate. I expect there'll be approximately 30 minutes for audience questions and candidate responses, but this is an estimate. Obviously, if you're full of questions, we don't want to cut you off. We do apologize in advance if we do have to do that. You may have up to 30 seconds to pose your question and the candidates will have up to one minute to answer. I will then give each candidate 30 seconds for a rebuttal if they wish to make one. Ann Murray is going to be stationed at the mic to assist you. Please come up to the microphone and state your name, or you can write your question on a card and pass it to a League volunteer. If we run out of time before we get to your question, get your question answered, we've asked all of the candidates to remain after this forum so you may ask your question directly with them. I'll kick off this part of the forum with the first question, and this is for all four of you. What specific actions should the city council take to address the opioid crisis in our community? Kate, since you were already broaching this, I'll let you start first.
Okay, thank you. It certainly is a concern, as I mentioned. Now that the 2015 data has been run, we are currently first in the state for opioid-related deaths, so it's certainly something the city needs to continue to pay attention to. I've met with Chris Frank, the county health officer, and spent a little time talking with Brian Smith about this issue too. And I will say first of all that I'm encouraged with the fact that we're in some ways ahead of the curve as opposed to other communities in our state with the programs we already have in place. One of the very specific things I would like to see is the city council work with the group coming in to open the opioid treatment center and make sure that we facilitate anything that we can do to make sure that that opens. Because I think that that's going to be a really important addition to our ability to help people who are dealing with opioid use disorders.
Let's go to Lindsay next.
So maybe kind of picking up right where we just left off. One of the things that helps a lot with people with opioid abuse disorders and other kinds of substance abuse is stability in living situations. And so to the extent that the city can help to provide low-bear housing, can help the social service community, help people to get stability in their lives, they're better able to get to treatment and be able to address those issues. It is more cost-effective for us to provide those services than to have homeless people on the street. The most expensive spot to sleep in Port Angeles is probably in the hospital, right? Well, it is the hospital. And so when people don't have that kind of stability in their lives, they're going to end up using services that are more expensive, like emergency room services, and not being able to access the sort of long-term treatment programs that help to get out of those situations where many people found themselves in because of prescription drugs, which is not really up there in the court. Thanks.
Arthur?
Thank you. So from a city standpoint, I believe that we need to identify people who need our help and try and get them the resources that we have available to them without having to add any additional money into trying to fight this epidemic. We can just use basic police skills and try and find the dealers and get them put away. If we can get them put away, we can curtail the amount of drugs that we have in the community, which will hand-in-hand decrease the amount of usage that's going around. So I think I would work a little bit more closely with staff on trying to identify how we can identify the dealers and get them out of the community.
Travis?
Yes, thank you for the question. This is one of the most difficult questions that I've had to answer in running for council. I don't pretend to have the answers. I think we need to look at first asking, why is this going on? And is this problem unique to Port Angeles? And what are the forces that are bringing this here? And I don't, again, I don't have specific answers for that. It's very complex. There was a question today about suing the drug makers that I answered on the Todd Artloff Show. And, you know, there's no one place that we can, one entity that we can place the blame on for this. And there's also not one answer. I think we need to look at catching people, having a safety net available for people when they want help. And I think the jail is doing a good job of that. We need to talk more about that. And we also need to collaborate and bring experts in from all areas around this issue to get some ideas. And we have been doing that as a community and I think we need to continue to.
As I explained earlier, you each will have a chance for a rebuttal. Perhaps you have heard one of the other candidates say something that triggered something in your mind, or there was something you ran out of time before you could say. Is there anyone who wants to make a rebuttal?
Well, this is one area where Arthur and I said things that are different and so, you know, some people have criticized us for not, you know, differentiating ourselves, which isn't necessarily that thing. But in terms of cost-effectiveness, it's far more effective to deal with substance abuse with prevention than going after the supply chain. And that's proven time and time again. I think the example of the drug policy of the entire nation of Portugal shows that really well, where they've decriminalized drugs, crime is down, addiction rates are down, more people are seeking treatment. It's far more effective to address the people, address people who are dealing with addictions than in going after the supply, particularly when the supply is provided by licensed medical providers. Sorry.
Anyone else wish to rebut?
Yeah, I'll just follow up to Lindsay. This is where we probably do disagree on this topic. We already pay for our police staff, so it's not a cost that gets incurred in treatment. And I've been in part of a sting in Chicago where we actually went after a couple of people and it is successful. You know, it's not going to be a battle that we win, but it's one that is already paid for through our tax dollars. And yeah, thank you.
Travis or Kate? No?
It's not a rebuttal. I'm not running against either of them. But as I ponder on this issue, and I have, you know, I don't know that the answer comes from city council. There are ideas, there are big ideas, but I think a lot of that, these are state and federal issues that can bring those ideas forward, not the city council in my mind.
Well, I might as well take the opportunity to say, I do think the city council can continue to provide leadership and support for the collaborations that are already happening. And I think there are a lot of impressive collaborations in place already to deal with this issue. And so I think if nothing else, as leaders in the community, I think we want to publicly continue to support those things. And I do think the opioid treatment program that wants to come to town can fill a really important need and so we need to see how we can support that.
Thank you. Okay, let's hear your questions. Please come up to the podium and Ann will see that you have a microphone or if you've got a, if you have written down, nope. Come on, folks.
I'm light. I'll be up there all night.
No, no. Please give your name.
Hi, I'm Rachel Ringer, live in Port Angeles. So you guys were talking about the opioid issue that's happening here and it's all over the United States. My thing that I'd like to say is there is things that are happening with city council in helping out with this. One example is that they can help out with like the program that is the Clean Program.
We need a question, not a statement.
Is the Clean Program? So how as the city council members that you can help out with programs that are put on like that with the Clean Program to help out?
Are you addressing that to all of them?
All of them.
Okay. Well, then we will start this one with Travis.
Okay. Rachel, the Clean Program is the needle pickup program that you brought forward to the city council, correct?
Nope.
No. Well, then I'm uninformed on the Clean Program. I think we need to...
Police Department.
Police Department. I think we need to, so I'm unfamiliar with that specific program within the police department. You know, I think we need to look, like Kate said at one point, we need to look at the agencies that are already trying to address things with regard to this. I guess I don't have a whole lot else to say. I'll hopefully be more informed about that next time I get the question.
Arthur?
Likewise, I am not informed on the Clean Program as well. I just had a ride-along with the police department last week, Friday, and I haven't had a chance to sit down with Officer, or Chief Captain Smith. But what I can say is from city council stand, it's a matter of being proactive and communicating and supporting the programs that we have available. That's what I can give you right now.
Kate?
Well, unfortunately, I also do not know the Clean Program. And I did spend some time talking to Brian Smith about this issue, so I guess it just didn't come up when we were talking about it. Or maybe it was in advance of that becoming something that they're working on. So I certainly would like to know more about it. I would say that I'm pretty impressed with the approach that the police department is taking to this issue and so I'm inclined, without knowing much about it, to think that if Chief Smith is on board with it, that it's probably a fairly reasonable program. But again, I also don't know enough about it clearly, so.
Lindsay?
So our police department has been doing a really good job of treating people like people in this whole thing and not looking at people as, you know, expendable or, you know, not part of our community. You know, the Assistant Chief of Jason Vieda, you know, said, you know, people come here and, you know, this is the place where they are and it's a free country, you can be here. There's this persistent rumor in our community that, you know, people who are homeless are paid to come here. And, you know, I raised that question at the Clallum County Homelessness Task Force meeting a couple of weeks ago with the providers who work directly with the homeless community. And they said, you know, sometimes if somebody like has a job here, they might get support to come here, just like, you know, providers here will, you know, help somebody get back home to family in another state. So occasionally that can happen. But no, the people who are homeless here at Clallum County are our own neighbors. They are us and it's our responsibility to look at this humanly and as one community.
Thank you. It looks like some cards have been turned in. However, we do want to give an opportunity for anyone who would like to come up to the mic and express their question themselves, to do that first. Is there anyone out there?
I want to make a line. Anyway. Same line.
Hi, I'm Paula Barnes. And as you probably know, gun violence is a major issue in our country. More than 30,000 people in our country each year lose their lives because of firearm-related homicide or suicide. What do you think you can do as a city council member to reduce gun violence?
Travis, we'll start with you.
I don't think I'm going to take a full two minutes. I appreciate this question and in light of what I think most of us are still digesting from a couple of weeks ago. You know, it's horrific what's happened, but again, looking at the role of city council and local government, the government that is closest to the people, I do not have a answer for your question. I'm sorry.
Let's go next to Lindsay.
So we live in a community where a lot of people feel very strongly about guns. You know, a lot of people hunt, a lot of people, you know, use them. You know, a lot of people hunt, a lot of people, you know, use them for legitimate purposes. That doesn't mean that we can't look at policies that would help to make people safe. Policies like licensing the people who own the guns, the guns themselves and the transactions, similar to the policy in Australia. There's things that we can do that don't limit people's legitimate uses of guns while also helping to make us safer. And local governments can play a role there. We need to digest what the Second Amendment means according to, you know, recent US Supreme Court rulings. But it really means a right to self-defense. And, you know, there's certain policies that some cities have tried, and those are the topics of discussion within those US Supreme Court rulings. But, you know, there's room for exploration about how to make it safer. I mean, guns, domestic violence, and drug driving are really the, the safety hazards we face on a daily basis.
Kate?
I think certainly there are some leadership opportunity. Again, I keep coming back to that. But I think having some conversations about it certainly wouldn't hurt. And I'd like to consider at some point potentially, looking at what role the city could play in, in policies that would help keep us safer. And something else that Lindsay said gave me a thought that has just completely escaped my mind. So I do think it is a concern, and we do have a number of people here who are gun owners and using live guns legitimately. And so I do think it's something that needs to be on our radar screen. Thank you.
Arthur?
So this is a topic that splits the country in half right away, just when you say the word guns. Typically, gun violence is a big city problem, more so than a small city problem. Not to say that there isn't gun violence or issues in smaller cities. But if you take Australia, or UK, or even from where, I'm previously from, Chicago, restrictions don't work. People who are intent on doing violent criminal activities, they will do so regardless of what restrictions, what laws are out there. By nature, that's what they're going to do. But what we need to do is we need to be able to have discussions. If we need to listen to people, and there's a need for it, then we need to sit down and debate it and see what we can do. But short from that, I think we already have laws on the books that pretty much are intact for everyone to follow. Those who won't follow it are not going to follow it.
Each of you has an opportunity to express another 30 seconds. Kate, maybe the idea that escaped your mind?
No, it's gone.
Anyone else want to add anything? No? Okay. Do we have anyone else who wants to come to the podium?
Hi, I'm Paula Doherty. Would each of you support a citywide ban on use of plastic bags in the city of Port Angeles? Can you hear you? Oh, I was asking if they-
The microphone.
There are other people that can't hear you.
Closer to the-
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. I'm asking if each of these candidates, if elected, would support a citywide ban on use of plastic bags in the city of Port Angeles?
Arthur, will you take this one first?
Sure. I think we do definitely need to transition to more sustainable options in terms of plastic bags and other products. But plastics in themselves, we use them every day, and they're important. As long as we all do the environmentally right thing and recycle as opposed to throw plastics away, I don't see why we shouldn't contribute to looking for other options.
Kate? I would support a plastic bag ban. I think we live in one of the most beautiful places in the country, right on a rather large body of water filled with marine life that can be very negatively impacted by the amount of plastics in our water. I already see quite a few people at the grocery store using reusable bags. So I think that while there would be a learning curve to that, I don't know that it's something that we couldn't adjust to. And I think it would be beneficial for our community.
Travis?
Yes. My instinct is, is no, I would not. I wouldn't seek something like that out. The only way I think I would be convinced to ban plastic bags is if our local mill was making the paper bags. Outside of that, I think it's something to do with personal freedom here. I think the curve is already heading away from plastic bags. We have a whole bunch of huge totes in the back of our car that we use. And I think there's a lot of peer pressure and things going that way, and that's fine. But I wouldn't implement that from city government now.
Lindsay?
Remember 16 years ago, I was traveling in Germany, and, you know, when you checked out of the grocery store, you could buy a little cloth bag or buy maybe a paper bag. But like, you know, 16 years ago. Many countries around the world are recognizing that plastic bags in particular are a nefarious form of trash for some of the reasons that Kate and other people have mentioned. And I don't see a reason why the city couldn't help to encourage cleaning up that form of pollution.
Do any of you wish to contribute some more comments on this? Okay. And it looks like you've got a fistful of cards there. Would you like to read the first one?
Just a couple. This is from Kathy McClintock. What specific ideas can you offer to provide housing for the homeless? Would the city consider allowing a mobile home in a backyard to provide a housing unit?
Can you reread the last half of that question, please?
Would the city consider allowing a mobile home in the backyard to provide a housing unit?
Travis, will you go first on this one?
Okay. All right. Specifically on the mobile home in the backyard, there's certain scenarios where that could work. But I have a personal friend who has a neighbor who has an encampment in their yard. And if you talk to the citizens in Port Angeles, I think they would, they would strongly oppose something like that. As far as answers to the homelessness problem, one of the small things that the city's done in the last year was opened up the potential for people to put mother-in-law type apartments out in their backyard. Convert an extended garage or something like that into a small dwelling. And that is an idea that, A, gives an opportunity for a homeowner to have a small rental, and B, provides housing that is at the lower end of the cost structure and could help address this.
Arthur, will you take this next?
Actually, that was one of the things that I myself was thinking about recently. I do have a couple of RVs that I was actually pondering this very thought myself, was how could I put this to use and at the same time make some extra money? I would definitely support having homeowners have an option to not only build something in their backyard to help ease the, the home crisis that we have here with having such a shortage of available homes. This would definitely be a good way to bring costs down and make it more available for people to be in a home structure. Not everyone has the ability to pay for a general contractor to come and build them a small studio, or an addition, or anything else like that. But a lot of people can pick up a, a fairly well-used RV for $2,000, $3,000 on Craigslist, and all they need to do is pull water and power and soar up to it, and they could live in an area like this. The marine climate here is very well-suited for that. So I would be in definite support of that.
Lindsay?
So the ideal vacancy rate, according to the policy analyst, is something like 6% in rentals, and worth at 3% or less than that. So we are dealing with a housing crisis, and it's basically caused by rent going up faster than incomes, although raising incomes doesn't necessarily solve the problem because then rent just keeps going up. So the solution is to get more housing units and more smaller housing units. And RVs are potentially, you know, a source for that. I think for the reasons that Travis pointed out, it's potentially a short-term solution and not something we should implement long-term. But in the short term, I would rather that people be living in RVs than living on the street.
Kate?
I do think a mobile home unit in the back of a property doesn't seem like a great idea. But allowing some kind of code-to-code kind of built structure as a, as an alternative seems like something I would support as an accessory dwelling unit that was already mentioned. I also think that the city could look at some other ideas in dealing with the housing shortage, which I do think is, there are chronically homeless and homeless, people who are on the verge of becoming homeless or losing their homes because they can't afford their rent and that sort of thing. And I think the approaches for those two things are very different. But I think the city can create ordinances to protect vulnerable renters, and we may need to spend some time looking at the potential negative impacts of short-term rentals. And I think looking at transit-oriented development so that people who are not necessarily affording vehicles and that sort of thing have an opportunity to live somewhere where they can get to where they need to go.
Do any of you wish to make a further comment on this issue?
So there's three aspects to the housing crisis right now. One is that, that real estate is now an investment, an international investment opportunity. And so it's not just about housing, which we should think of as a, as a human right, but it's also about people using real estate purchases as a staple investment. And so we need to figure out how to decouple that, and that's a larger regional issue. Second is being able to make alternative dwelling units more available, things like tiny houses, accessory dwelling units, okay, mother-in-laws, maybe trailers, that sort of thing. And the third aspect is getting more housing stock out there generally.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go on to the next question, and you have another one to read?
You want to ask one?
Oh, we have a live questioner.
Oh, mine! Hi, my name is Mickey Vale, and my past has included working with a lot of nonprofits. And one of the things that I found essential was developing a reserve of funds for times when we weren't getting donations and whatever. And it was interesting hearing about losing one of our tax bases and how it's affected all of the departments in the city. How would you go about developing a viable reserve for the city?
Kate, will you take this one first?
Sure. Well, the good news is that the current city council has established a requirement of a 25% reserve, which we currently have. The other piece which is related to your question, that with the shortfall to the general fund from the loss of the taxes from the mill, the city went through an 18-month budgeting process and was able to take one time set-asides from every department in the city to put money aside to fulfill the gap for next year. Now, that doesn't have a long-term solution if the mill doesn't open, but certainly in the short term, I think we're going into next year with a reasonable reserve and a set-aside to fill that gap.
Lindsay?
So I don't want to just repeat what Kate said, but so I'll up the ante here and say that the 25% reserve really isn't enough when we look at some of the things we face as a region, specifically the catastrophic earthquake and tsunami scenario that is 30% likely to occur within 50 years. And that's the sort of thing that 25% reserve is just not going to be enough for. We're going to have complete failure of all of our infrastructure, and, you know, the predictions are between 6,000 and 24,000 people in Collum County dead from that event. So, you know, we need to be planning far more than just reserves to fix sewer mains when they break, or take care of a business, like, you know, a major business like the mill on the spit. But looking at this, this major catastrophic scenario that we're likely to face, you know, within our lifetimes, or at least our kids' lifetimes.
Travis?
The cuts that were made to the city, each department went through when we found out the shortfall from the nip-on-mill closing. Each department went through and made cuts, and again, they amounted to $300,000 for this year and looking at 400 plus next year. This, this taught me a couple of things. One, everybody told me from day one, starting to, you know, talk about running for city council, there's no room in the budget. There's no room in the budget. We can't do anything else. There's no room in the budget. Something happens here, and we cut out $300,000. So that's a lesson to me. The other thing is looking at, again, this, this issue of being reliant so much on one business. We need to think big, we need to think long-term, and we need to plan for the possibility that that mill, when it's up and running, A, it could take longer than we expect it to, and B, they could be using less energy when they reopen and they're retrofitted. And so with the reserve, again, we have the reserve, you know, stuff there.
Arthur?
So I don't think I could add too much more than all the other candidates had said pretty well. From a business background, I think we need to continually be reviewing and revising the budget, making sure that we can cut whatever we don't need to spend money on. But I think the other aspect of it, it needs to be that in order to raise our reserve is to have the departments that have a way of making revenue to increase that. Our parks departments can up their programming, I know, police departments obviously do their job and get, hand out more tickets. There are other ways to increase that. Unfortunately, no, that's just kind of part of the game.
Do any of you want to add something further on that question? Lindsay?
So, you know, the city's done a really good job of balancing its budget, which is really key. And, you know, we don't want to be in the situation where we're going into more debt. At the same time, we've done that without looking at the cost benefit of different programs and the ability to provide services that in the long run can help to lower costs. We don't want to be balancing the budget by kicking the can down the road, and that's something we need to assess and do what's referred to as asset management with the infrastructure of the city, to make sure that we know when a major infrastructure's going to need to be up for repair.
Anyone else? Okay. Anne, can you read another question?
This question is from Debbie Urisch. What would you recommend be done for emergency preparedness for a mega-thrust earthquake that's already come up of the Cascadia subduction zone?
Does anyone want to hear that again?
Yeah.
Would you read it once more?
Essentially, it's what, what would you recommend be done for emergency preparedness for the earthquake that we all expect to come?
Arthur, would you take this one first?
Sure. I believe over the last several council meetings, this topic has kind of come up, and there are seminars and trainings that is available to the council. And I think that's what we just need to continue to do, is just continue looking for options to, to educate ourselves as to what we could do, and then find ways that we can implement what we have learned from those available resources.
Travis?
Yes, thank you. In my opening statement, I talked about one of the first-year goals would be finding a solution to the airport and transferring the navigation easement to the port. I believe in an emergency, that is one of the single largest factors as far as getting help in here. We are isolated. Five Sol德 bridges, I think, to the west, and Hood Canal and others to the east. We're not going anywhere. Help and resources would need to come in, and so that goes back to the airport. The short-term motivation for, for having an airport right now is for emergency flights in and out. That's, that's essentially the main reason that it, that the city council's taken actions to cut trees that they have to keep it open for emergencies. But I think we need to, again, think long-term and, and plan long-term for, for its viability.
Kate?
Well, I was sort of chuckling to myself when Travis said, we're not going to go anywhere because I think we all might be on the street. That being said, we probably need to continue doing the training that is being offered at a minimum so that we can think through the bigger picture for our community. And not having had that training yet, I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I'm looking forward to the opportunity to participate in that. I do think the airport is an issue, assuming that the runway is not also liquefected. But I think there's no easy solution because we're, I mean, I read that article in the paper and thought, good gracious, well, I don't even know where you start, really. So I think I'll start with the training and, and work with people who are experts on this issue to make sure that we're at least setting the stage to set ourselves up for some kind of success in the event of a natural, in the event of the natural disaster.
Lindsay?
Can I just ask, how many people here came to the city council work session last month on this issue? Okay, there's like four hands. month on this issue? Okay, there's like four hands in the audience. Two council members who you should go for, Jim and Mike, and two others as well. So the slides for that work session are on the city's website. If you go to citiofpa.us and go to the council meetings, and you look for the last one in September, you can see the final. You can download like 100 slides that show the scenario of what we're dealing with with this event. And it's incredibly sobering and pretty depressing. Pick your favorite post-apocalyptic movie, and it's probably the set you're seeing. So we don't want that scenario. What we want is to, you know, recognizing it's a major disaster, people are going to have to work together. And we're not going to be able to rely on government. That's the last of other major disasters, Katrina, what's happening in Puerto Rico right now, that we can't rely on the government in those situations because there's only a handful of police officers, only a handful of firefighters. So it's going to take community education, and I'd like to see us start to implement that on an annual basis.
Do any of you wish to add something?
Yeah, I'll add to that just a little bit. We have, like Lindsay said, we're, as new candidates, we're going to be relying on the staff that is already way ahead of the game and being educated into it. But we will basically learn our roles whoever gets elected. But as Lindsay did say, I do echo that, that maybe we should start creating times for the community to come in and learn what some of the staff already knows so that we can expand that knowledge base. Because that actually reminded me that in the community that I work at, they have started doing that. They've started weekly meetings to go over the new information that's been presented to them. I think there's definitely a way that we can go as a council.
Anyone else?
I'll just say that adding on to what Lindsay said, I think it goes back to my issue of improving communication with the community from the city council. And so really considering that issue as a key piece of what we need to be communicating to the community as a council, as the leadership of our community, is going to be important.
Travis or Lindsay? Do we have another question?
Hi, my name's Melanie Creer. Obviously, jobs is a very important issue, and it is becoming increasingly apparent that the future of our economy is low-carbon. So I want to know specifically what you think the city can do to help prepare and ensure that we're up to date and that we're providing low-carbon jobs.
Lindsay, would you take this one first?
Yeah, so not answering directly, but I'll try and get to that within my one minute. One of the reasons why affordable housing is such an issue in Washington State is Department of Commerce has had a number of prospective employers who want to come to Washington and say, "Hey, we'd like to come to Washington, but we don't know where our employees would live." And so the housing crisis is actually affecting the potential for jobs. And I think that's an issue here to some extent as well in Collin County, although I don't have data to support that. So, you know, there's a lot of people, I look at who's moved onto my block, and it's people moving from, you know, bringing tech jobs to the peninsula, working from home. My next-door neighbor telecommutes to Europe in the morning and Asia in the evening. And she can do that from Port Angeles, and she's chosen to live in Port Angeles. And so how can we help to, you know, encourage that sort of thing as a way to bring jobs? How can we provide, basically, as a city, the infrastructure to plant the foundation so that when people want to start their own work, they can do that successfully here as well?
Kate?
Well, I think that certainly looking at what's already here, and just from a basic economic development standpoint, I think there are a number of options that are at play potentially in Port Angeles. I think the CRTC is a good example of, that's the Composite Recycling Technology Center. So they're using scrap composite material from airplanes that would otherwise end up in the landfill to create new products. So I think that's a good example of something that's happening in, within the community. And I think Bob Schrader at the EDC is really looking at economic development from a community development standpoint. And so I think, you know, maybe putting something like that on his radar screen to consider when we're looking at what kind of jobs we're developing here would be useful.
Arthur?
So I think from the city's role, we need to get the basics down first and make sure that we're being able to do everything that we can efficiently so that way we can create a environment where we can attract these jobs. The biggest thing is going to be that we need to make, create incentive policies to bring people who want to have these types of jobs to come here. We need more housing. We need, we need to get this drug addiction problem under control. But it's going to start with just getting the basics down.
Travis?
I think one idea that comes to mind is actually something that the city's started to implement is the high-speed fiber cable network. That is something that, like Lindsay was talking about, gives access to people to telecommute and makes, gives access to people to live in Port Angeles and work elsewhere. But having said that, that's one idea that comes to mind. I think we have to be careful as a city council and looking at our role in local government. First thing that comes to mind, I keep talking about the mill shutting down, but most of us heard about the exchange to McKinley Paper after it happened. I don't know what as a city council person member could have done to change that. I had all sorts of ideas. I'm sure lots of people have great ideas of things that could be done with that property. But a business transaction took place, and here we have this new mill. We are at, you know, and it's, again, one of the largest utility taxpayers that we have, and so we're kind of stuck with that.
Do any of you wish to make a further comment?
So just to address the low-carbon aspect of the question, one of the things that we can do is look at what's sometimes referred to as import substitution economics. What do we import from other regions that we could be producing here? You know, food comes to mind as something that, you know, we live in a climate where we can do a lot of agricultural work, and, you know, to some extent, that's happening more over in the Squim area. But we could do that more, and that would then replace the shipping costs of bringing food to the peninsula to the extent that it's happening now.
Anyone else? Arthur?
Yeah, as Lindsay said, as city staff or city council members, we don't want to overly restrict, but we want to be creative in ways to figure out how we can reduce costs and make things more available. I think a good idea would be to work a little bit closer with the port and see what we can figure out on how to bring some of these big ships that are very efficient at moving large amounts of products. And maybe we can figure out some creative solutions for that because we can't really get rail in here, and so we're only left with truck and ship for export.
Anyone else? Do we have another question?
No, I don't.
Anyone else?
My name's Mike Dory. We live on the outside of town. Among the impacts of climate change, the mid-Atlantic snowpack is melting faster, and that's our water supply. The state has a water rule in the eastern end of the county already. As you see today, as forests dry out, we're having more and more wildfires all the time. Etta's Hook and the downtown area are liquefiable soils, and the forecast for sea level rise and winter storm inundation will be chewing away at those soils 20, 30 or so. Do you support Port Angeles having a climate action plan that would include strategies to help bend the curve on climate change, but also some strategies to adapt as sea level rise and these other impacts throw more dangers?
Travis, will you take this one first?
I was hoping I wouldn't be first on this one, no.
I'm keeping track, and I'm trying to keep a fair balance here.
I'll defer to anybody else who wants to go. No, I will take this. You know, that's a good question. My office is in the Lanning Mall on the top floor. You know, I'm on that shaky ground, that what used to be tied, tied land. My answer to the question, though, is no. I don't, I don't believe that in Port Angeles, we can address this issue. You know, when I look at, when I look at the facts out there, and when I look at the science on all sides of this, one thing I always come back to is that this climate has changed forever. It has always been changing. And so I am not convinced that we can take a role in changing that. And I'll leave it at that.
Kate?
Is it possible to have the question read quickly again? I know it's time-consuming, but it was kind of a big question. I want to make sure.
I think essentially he's asking, "Would you support Port Angeles developing a climate action plan?"
Well, I think that, given that we live in this amazing environment, we would be remiss if we didn't pay attention to what's happening and whether we can, as a city, affect any change, even on a local level. I think just because it's a big thing doesn't mean that as a small town, we couldn't take some small steps. Just thinking about a plastic bag ordinance, a bag man, that's one small step that has, that can have an impact. And so I guess I would certainly be open to having a conversation and thinking about what that might look like.
Lindsay?
So I'll just address the shoreline issue of the question and the adaptation part of that instead of addressing the merits of climate science. So, yeah, I mean, we're dealing with both the long-term emergency of sea level rise as well as the short-term prospect of tsunami. And honestly, the planning policies that go into both, I think, are similar. So we've known now for at least five years or so that Etta's Hook out on the end where the Coast Guard base is, is going to be flooding every year. And yet we still relocated some infrastructure out there, or the Navy did. And that's pretty short-sighted when we know what's going to be happening to that mobile landform that is a natural sandpit. So I do think we need to plan ahead because it's going to come back and bite us, and we're going to end up paying more later by failing to plan.
Arthur?
So, yeah, it's a tough question with all the information that was presented in that. I would definitely support us having conversations and getting ahead on certain issues when it comes to being proactive and efficient and keep the environment in mind. But I don't think that that is something that we locally would be able to tackle ourselves. And some of it actually is probably more of a state and federal issue than it is a local issue. But definitely having a communication to discuss things that we could do for residents in town to prepare for some of these things is definitely a good topic to have for council to discuss and figure out ways to inform the community. But I don't think that we will be the ones to solve the problem.
Do any of you wish to add something?
Sure. Kind of dovetailing on what Lindsay said and addressing that shoreline piece, I do think that the city council can consider when we're, at a minimum, we can consider when we're looking at future development or current development and what that's going to look like, we can certainly keep things like that in mind, I think, so we don't end up in a situation, for example, that we have a harbor cleanup on both ends of the harbor because we didn't think through at the time that that happened, what the long-term ramifications were. So I think we could certainly look at that.
Travis or Lindsay?
There was another piece of the question addressing snowpack. The long-term climatological prospect is that we get about similar precipitation in the winter, but more of it's going to fall as rain than as snow. That's going to mean that we don't have that reservoir of snowpack in the late summer when we need more of it for agriculture, similar amount for people generally, and more of it for fish in the river. So we want more water in this critical period from August 15th to October 15th, and we're going to have a lot less of that. So that is something that we need to plan for the summer of 2015 is what we should expect as a typical year, say, 50 or 70 years from now. And that was a pretty catastrophic year for us, if you remember the Queetz Fire in the southern end of the peninsula.
Arthur or Travis? Next question?
Oh, I'm Sadie Crowe. Hi. What has each of you done to prepare for a position on city council?
Lindsay, would you start this one?
So I began thinking about this a couple of years ago and started attending city council meetings. Not everyone, but regularly at the, you know, last December. I'm the only candidate who sat through both days of the city's strategic planning process earlier this year. So I know kind of what the city has thought about its priority for the next two years, which means the first year that we're on council. Yeah, I think that's enough to say.
Arthur?
So I've only been here for just about four years, so I haven't had that many years to go back on. But I've started attending all the city council meetings since I've put my name into the ring. I try and talk to people who I am around in our community to discuss issues and concerns that they have so that way if I am elected, I can have more perspective than just my own. Aside from that, that's what I've been doing.
Travis?
Having grown up here, I've looked at all the opportunity that this town has my whole life.
We will continue the forum. I think we need to commend the Montgomerys on really giving their all as volunteers. I appreciate it. I believe that we'll call an end to the question period and go directly now to our candidates' closing statements. We'll reverse the order from the opening statements and begin with Kate. Two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Our mics are back on? Yes, okay. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening. I really appreciate it. I am hopeful for what is to come in Port Angeles. I believe we, as a community, have so much potential, and I look forward to helping, to helping us achieve it. I have the right combination of skills to do this job well, from my background in public administration to my ability to remain measured and my open-minded in times of discord. As a younger person, I gravitated toward a master's in public administration because I was passionate about finding ways for people to feel more connected to their community, and I wanted to be part of creating systems that could improve the lives of others. In the process of my studies and subsequent career work, I discovered that I love digging into policy, budgets, and zoning. Not everyone can say they love thinking about zoning, but I really enjoy it. Given my background, I understand that government, if well-applied, has the potential to bolster a community. I also understand that so much more can be achieved when we work in collaboration, seek out potential resources, and are transparent about our decisions. If elected to city council, I intend to do all three. For me, a driving concern has been opening up the lines of communication between the council and the community. I believe it is important to reach out for more information in order to make the most informed decision. I am doing the basics of attending city council meetings as well as connecting with city managers and community leaders, attending relevant community meetings, and now walking the street to meet my neighbors. I am ready to hit the ground running, and I hope I will have your vote.
Thank you. Travis?
All right. I will talk a little bit about my qualifications again and what I've been doing to prepare in my closing statement. I have been investing in this community for a long time, and I feel like watching what's going on at the city level of government, I've been wanting, I've wanted to get involved for a long time. Circumstances in my life with my family and my business, and just where I'm at, and with the support of those around me, I think now's the time that I can take this on. The things that I've experienced, I didn't always imagine myself doing this, but some of the things that have prepared me were being the president of my Rotary Club, being involved with volunteers in Medicine of the Olympics, currently involved with the Peninsula College Foundation. Some of these roles have given me the experience, I think, and knowledge and connections and networks to, to hear what's going on in the city and to try and make a difference. With my last few seconds, I'd like to touch on two points that I've tried to cover in every opening, in every forum that I've had the ability, opportunity to talk to people at. And that is, first, the second-class city issue that is on the ballots. I strongly encourage everybody to vote no. I believe all of the candidates that are running agree, but it's worth taking a moment to please encourage you to vote no. to please encourage you to vote no and tell your friends the same thing. We are getting a new city council with four new individuals. That was largely the reason that that, that came to be. And it's irrelevant, we're getting a new council, let's move on from that. And along the same lines, let's move on from fluoride. I have a very strong personal opinion, but what's more important to me is listening to our citizens. And right now, we have an opportunity to vote on that issue. Please vote and know that if the current city council does not put this issue to rest because this vote is non-binding and they don't have to, if elected, I will abide by the city's vote. Thank you.
Arthur?
So with all the commotion and excitement, any coherent thoughts of having a well-articulated closing statement has gone out the window. But with keeping Tom in mind, you know, I'm not afraid to leap out and help and do what needs to be done, as you can clearly see. And I'm not worried or concerned about doing the same for being a city council member. I'll jump into action to be able to work on matters that need to be addressed at hand. My experience at the homeowners association, dealing with a volunteer board of seven, it probably is the best experience I have that, that leads into this position. I've worked with them on their policy and on maintaining their community. And while it's not as large as Port Angeles is, it is a good experience into this position.
Lindsay?
So I appreciate your vote for city council for position three. And, you know, my background, I work in the law. I look at policy and I try and figure out how it works. And as I've been going door-to-door in Port Angeles, talking to people about what, what are their issues, you know, they say, "Hey, this is happening at the end of our street, it's flooding." And I'm thinking about, okay, how can we address that? Not just in this particular place, but structurally so that we plan appropriately into the future. That's how my brain's been trained to work and I feel like I can apply that well to help serve the city on city council. Just to mention, there's campaign literature over on the left there and I have stickers if people want to. Feel free to take as many as you think you'll use and take as much campaign literature as well. And I'll stick around to answer questions afterward if anyone wants to talk one-on-one or feel free to give me a call or an email my information on the campaign literature as well. I'd appreciate your vote for position three. Thank you.
Thank you again, everyone. Let's give a round of applause now. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I want to thank all of you for running for office and for participating in this forum. Also, the two candidates who are running unopposed for other seats are in the audience and I would like to give each of them an opportunity to stand and say a word or two. Michael French?
I am running for Port Angeles, position two. And I am, I'm unopposed, but my opponent's name will be on the ballot, so if you want to avoid some sort of local constitutional crisis, please consider voting for me.
Jim Moran?
Hi, thank you. I'm also running unopposed technically, but the, my opponent's name is also still on the ballot, so constitutional, really. So I would encourage you to complete your ballot in all aspects of it. So even though Michael and I are running unopposed, we still need your vote for that portion of the ballot. So please don't ignore parts of your ballot because you think they might be irrelevant. I would encourage everybody to complete their entire ballot and send them in. And please encourage everybody in your community to vote. We need turnout, especially with the important issues that we have on the ballot this time around. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other candidates in the audience that are running for any other position in the county? Okay, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I want to thank you all for coming. I want to thank our former timers and we'd be sure to send your good wishes to them. And I want to thank our two substitute timers. And I believe all the candidates are going to stick around if you have one-on-one questions or things you'd like to discuss with them. Ballots will be mailed October 18th, so watch for yours and be sure to vote before or on November 7th. Thank you very much.